Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of the Town Council for May 23rd to order. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Counselor Harrington is excused tonight. I hope she's having a good time. She's on vacation. Did she send one? Everybody else is here, right? One, two, three, six. Yes. By way of minutes, we have upcoming Town Council meetings. Thursday, June 13th, in the Matthew Thornton Room is a regular meeting. Monday, June 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the Carriage Shed at Buckley's Great Stakes, 438 DW Highway, we're having our annual retreat/work session. And then Thursday, June 27th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, we have our regular meeting. Eileen, did you have anything to add?
Boy Scout Harrison Faust from Troop 424 has completed his Eagle Scout project, which was the Admiral Forrest Sherman Memorial at Veterans Park. The official dedication ceremony -- sorry. The official dedication ceremony for the memorial to Adam Forrest Sherman will be held at Veterans Park on Monday, May 27th, at 3:00 p.m. The Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run will occur on Wednesday, June 5th, 2019, at 8:30 a.m. Officers and athletes will be -- I guess that's not mutually exclusive, right? Officers and athletes. Nobody else got that. So, we'll be carrying the torch on Daniel Webster Highway from Nashua Town Line to the Bedford Town Line. Wow. Please cheer them on if you are around. If you would like more information, please contact Master Patrolman Steve Wallen. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions of Eileen or of the council at this point? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Comments from the press and public? Seeing nobody rushing to the mic. Yes? Okay.
Eileen, can we get an update from you on the status of the volleyball courts?
Yes. I haven't -- I don't have one yet, but I will get you one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, we have no recollections, resignations, or retirements for tonight. No appointments, public hearings, legislative updates from state reps. Seeing none. That brings us to the Town Manager Report. That was quick.
July 2019 tax bills were mailed May 22nd, yesterday. Property owners should be receiving their bill within the next day or so. Bills are due by July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the Town Manager Report? The consent agenda is empty tonight. We have no old business. Under New Business, our first order is the Fourth Annual NH Hot Dogs, submitted by Robert Bergen, the Fourth Annual New Hampshire Hot Dogs Sale to Benefit the Alzheimer's Association, the longest day 2019. You're up, Bob.
Hold on. Okay. Good. Just hold on. In a minute, I'm going to talk with the video. But I want to say thank you to at least two or three of the town committees that have helped us since we were here. Nicola Valley has been very helpful. At some times, she's been very helpful.
Can you -- you have to speak with the microphone, so you can either walk over there and talk, or you can --
We can give you that one.
Hold that one?
You can take that with you, yeah.
Check that on the road again.
Okay.
I'll make it simple. On behalf of the New Hampshire Hot Dog Team, which is about 45 local people, I'd like to specifically thank Nicola Valley, your Town Manager, and Becky Thompson, have been very helpful. We've done something in New Hampshire that the regional chapter doesn't really grasp how they can get a town to totally turn over when they didn't even know where basically Merrimack was five years ago. What you've done well, I appreciate it. When he's ready, he can turn the video on. It's not long, but it does give you a few laughs. It also gives you a few insights into the disease, and it also shows you what we've done in three years. Oh? The skill.
Need help, Justin?
There it is. Dim the lights, and the show will go on.
[music] A minute and a half. That's the next thing you're able to edit on my photo. 650 people came.
You still have to be at a mic, Bob.
Yeah, we'll go ahead.
650 people came last year, and I appreciate it. Some people even came after we ran out of rolls, like Peter, Albert, and a few others. But it was a great problem to have, once we crossed 1,000 hot dogs, then 1,100. And then one of the ladies noticed we ran out of rolls. At that point, we said, okay, we're done. But we only wanted to raise awareness publicly. People came all day. When you get 700 people from our village to show up, and it's not an election, it's not a basketball game, not a football game, it's hot dogs. And we're hoping this year for 800, maybe a little more. Whoops, there's two of my community members. Ginny basically runs our kitchen. Bob tells me what to do, including being one of my chief cashiers. These people have been with us. I have a good group of people. Many are in the picture. What we're looking for this year is, again, to appreciate getting the proclamation, which I think you might have had a little influence on, but inviting you to come eat a hot dog, inviting you to come hang out. I think you might be pleased to say last year, Eileen, that there was a lot of people there when you walked through, and you took one look at it and said, oh my. Because it is the alley at the church, and it doesn't look like much until you see, you know, a series of tents and tables and chairs. We have tables and chairs for 90 people. So, parking is unlimited. We're hoping for a good turnout. Again, we're hoping to have no rain. We haven't had any in four years. And that's about it, unless you have any questions. I do have brochures, but I'm not going to hand them to you unless you really need them. Everything that Becky put into the proclamation is what I would tell you. If you've read the proclamation, then you know everything that I would normally tell you if you were not as educated. Any questions?
We're going to read it in a minute. Are there any questions at this point? I just want to take -- go ahead, Lon.
Yeah. It's a wonderful project that you do. Are there special avenues for donations?
Yes.
Okay.
I go out and I donate in kind. Most charities go out and look for gift cards, cash. We have been fortunate to have Sam's Club and Walmart, who last year donated almost $400 in merchandise. That'd be the hot dogs, that'd be -- and educated to not buy cheap hot dogs, buy all beef hot dogs. Walmart gives us whatever condiments and paper goods we want, unlimited. We have one person who donates a good portion of like $200 to the hot dogs. But the one thing that we could use this year, and I'm going to go out and really push the buttons of all the local businesses, I'm going to try and get all the soda donated by the Merrimack community businesses. I'm going to go around door to door and ask them anywhere from five to six to seven to eight 12-packs of Coke or Pepsi. And if we can get that, then maybe that'll be the final item that we don't have to purchase. We did have to pay $220 last year, that was our total expense, for 1,200 hot dogs, 1,200 rolls, 1,200 bags of chips, and Planet Fitness donated water, Shaw's donated water. So, we're just down to that soda. We could get people who say, gee, I want to do something. Okay. You could donate a 12-pack of soda, because that's our last item we hadn't filtered our way down to. So, I'm very happy with that. And then if I can, I'll answer the next question, then I want to talk to you about your job, because I have a responsibility to switch. Okay. Everybody knows what this is. This is a noodle.
Yeah.
Alzheimer's affects the synapses and the capacity to transfer information in the way you once did. I came up with a crazy idea, and for the last three weeks, I have had a couple of these on the corner of South Bebusak and Greenwood. And I'd like to challenge you and members of the community to go pick up one dollar. Put a stick in the ground, and put the noodle in the ground in your yard, the same way once or twice a year we put up blue lights instead of a clear light outside our house, indicating where the veterans in your neighborhood live, indicating the veterans that you want to say thank you to. We've had this one, two up, that I've had for three weeks. They don't blow away, nobody takes them, but it would be a beautiful statement. I am the ultimate anti-balloon person after last year. Because I think some of my people could say, balloons are nice when they're attached to a child, but when adults try to walk with 10 balloons, it doesn't happen. And so, we came up with the noodle idea. So, the noodles is our new idea to replace balloons. So, if you want to support our effort, buy one noodle, stick it in the ground, and stick it in your yard, and maybe it'll make a difference. I do know when Memorial Day comes around and Veterans Day comes around, you see a lot more blue lights on the outside of houses, and that's an indication of military presence. So, that's my only thing to bring up today, was the noodle is sort of the brain issue. Any other questions?
No, but I would like to thank you for your efforts and just let you know that there are several members on the council that have been touched by Alzheimer's personally, and we very much appreciate the work that you and all of your team do. And thank you very much, all of you folks that came out tonight for the work that you are doing and the ongoing effort to try and put an end to Alzheimer's. It's tragic.
We, as a team, are pleasantly pleased to see everything that's -- you know, when we look at the numbers, when we look at the number of people, Patty is our head hostess, and she goes bananas, because she says, they're still coming! I know. And we're running out of things, because we thought 1,000 would be nice, and then 1,200. That's just -- and everyone that I've talked to nationally has just been totally surprised. Now they look at, where is Merrimack, New Hampshire? How did they do that? I said, you know, because people care. They care about their neighbors, and we care backwards. So, I do appreciate the proclamation. I appreciate the time. Eileen, you helped arrange and the connections that you've made. I hope the video is appreciated. It's just a composite of all the photos. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
That brings us to our next order of business, which is the proclamation that Bob was referring to, and I have a copy of it here that I'll read into the record for us to consider. The Town of Merrimack Town Council Proclamation, National Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, June 2019. The longest day is June 21st. Your event is going to be on the 20th, if I'm not mistaken. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive generative brain disease, and the most common form of dementia, that tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments, and whereas there are no known treatments to prevent, cure, or even delay the onset or slow the progression of Alzheimer's disease, and whereas every 65 seconds, someone in the United States develops Alzheimer's disease, with the disease being the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, and whereas between 2000 and 2017, deaths from heart disease have decreased 9%, while deaths from Alzheimer's disease have increased 145%. And whereas 5.8 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and by 2050, this number is projected to rise to nearly 14 million. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to medications and management strategies that may temporarily improve symptoms, and whereas there is a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with the disease, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack, hereby proclaim June as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and June 21st, 2019, as, quote, "the longest day," unquote, in Merrimack, and stand in support of the Fourth Annual New Hampshire Hot Dog Stand fundraising event, taking place on June 20th in the Our Lady of Mercy Church Parking Lot, dated this 23rd day of May, 2019. Signed by the council. I'd like a motion to accept that proclamation.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Moved by Barbara and seconded by Lon. Are there any questions or thoughts?
Speaks for itself.
I think so. Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, abstaining? Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much, Bob and the team. We appreciate it. And good luck with that. Good luck with the weather.
Do you want to take the proclamation, though?
Uh, I don't know what. We're trying to sign it right now, so.
I know.
You want to take our only copy?
Well, do you need to keep it?
We'll get it to you.
I'll get it.
What's your preference?
I would prefer to give it to you later. Okay.
Can we all read the votes?
Well, you could stay. It's not going to be a long meeting.
I'm sure you're a good guy. It doesn't have a lot of other.
I know, it doesn't.
Anyone want to place their order today? Peter already has. Lon has.
Yeah, we're going to want six at least. My family will want at least six, so.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Well, you have to know people to get out of the day.
Four of them. Yes, just give me a call. I have to go back, but you're right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Next order of business, a donation acceptance for Parks and Rec, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Kisparius. The Town Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $300 from the Merrimack Lions Club to Parks and Rec to sponsor the summer movie nights in the park. First, went to Charter Article 815 and RSA 31:95-B.
Move approval.
Second.
Did you give a dollar amount?
About $300.
Okay.
Is what it says on the agenda.
No, I just wanted to make sure that you had said it as part of your motion.
I did say it. Thank you. Any other comments or questions you want to?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to thank the Merrimack Lions Club for their continual support of the summer movie night program in Merrimack, in the park, and contributions like this continue to maintain the quality of life that our community has grown accustomed to now over the past couple of years, and certainly is a wonderful benefit to have. So, I'm very grateful to the Lions for their generosity.
Awesome. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll call a vote. All those in favor of accepting the $300 from the Lions Club, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed and abstaining? That passes 6-0-0. Again, Nancy is excused from tonight. Next order of business is a donation from, again, for Parks and Rec, submitted by Parks and Rec Director Matthew Kisparius. The Town Council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $2,935 from the Rotary Club of Merrimack for Parks and Rec for the purchase and installation of a new piece of playground equipment at the Kids Cove Playground. First, went to Charter 815 and RSA 31:95-B.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Peter. Do you want to explain what we're doing, Bill?
So, absolutely. The Merrimack Rotary Club purchased a piece of the playground equipment called the Cozy Cocoon, just basically this big elongated seat inside of a sphere, a three-quarter open sphere, so that a child can go inside and kind of rock around back and forth. So, unless you want to clarify that, Eileen?
If you want to say it, can you let the others?
I was getting to that. Thank you. No, I appreciate it. Thank you for reminding me. I appreciate it. The specificity regarding this particular place is that it's been shown and proven that this type of device is especially designed for kids that are diagnosed with autism, or they're on the autism spectrum, Asperger's. So, the type of space that's inside this cylinder is going to allow the child to be able to escape the playground when they are, quote unquote, "overstimulated." So, there's the way that it's designed on the inside, there's some materials, some sensory types of materials on the inside of the sphere that go directly to sensory issues like tactile touch, those kinds of things. So, it's going to be great for when we have any child that has, that is a member of the autism spectrum. If they're not feeling comfortable that particular time, they're not have a location where they can go to -- it's still part of the playground, but it allows them to decompress just a little bit. So, it's an exciting, it's an exciting piece of playground equipment, and I anticipate that it will get a lot of use over Kids Cove, because Kids Cove is already --
Already gets a lot of exposure.
Already gets a lot of exposure. So, really, really thankful to the Rotary. Again, some of the civic support that Merrimack gets, you know, just from the Lions and the previous motion, now with the Rotary Club, I can't begin to express my thanks and gratitude to the generosity of what the Rotary continues to do for the Town of Merrimack, to make Merrimack's quality of life simply second to none. So, this is exciting. So, I'm very -- personally, I'm very grateful. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Lon?
Yes, I'm very gratified for this donation from the Rotary Club through the Parks and Rec. I have some experience with having watched childhood development with a child, my grandson, who is on the autism spectrum. And from a very early age, I've been aware of how much comfort and how much, for lack of a better word, relaxation, children who are affected in various stages on the spectrum derive from this type of device. I don't know what it is, but there's something about the enclosure, and yet being able to -- we've been provided pictures with the portals that Bill was talking about, so they are not isolated visually. They can see what's going on, but there's a comfort zone that develops that they really do appreciate. I'm very impressed with the awareness and the effort of the Rotary Club and Matthew and the Parks and Rec Committee to be that inclusive of children that are in that situation and have those needs. Very, very appreciative, and I want everyone to understand that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Lon. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the donation of 2,800 -- how much was the thing said?
2,935.
That. $2,935 from the Rotary Club. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 6-0-0 as well. Bringing us to our last order of business on the main agenda under New Business, a review and study of the Town of Merrimack Comment Letter regarding sound barriers for the Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project, submitted by Town Manager Eileen Cabanel. Town Council to review the draft comment letter from the Town of Merrimack to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation regarding sound barriers for the Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project. Eileen?
As you recall, during one of the council, recent council meetings, you had expressed a desire to write a letter because you were concerned that all the, that only some of the areas and neighborhoods were being provided with sound barriers, and you and Nancy and Peter volunteered to write it. So, I'm going to turn the mic over to Peter to talk about his letter.
Thank you, Eileen. Basically, this, you know, when this project began, I think a number of folks, when they first had that meeting, expressed their concerns that they're about the widening and the sound barriers, and it's obvious, all you have to do is take a ride down the turnpike. And the state has submitted a plan, and a number, I believe seven areas are going to get sound barriers. Berms, and I believe they're anywhere from, they're 16 feet high and anywhere from between 400 and 1,000 feet long at the various locations. But there's still a list of communities that I think the council here, we all sympathize with and want to advocate for, that do need sound barriers. And these are the East Ridge Condominiums, the Back River Road, Ministerial Drive, Vista Way, Roundtree Drive, Maple Ridge Condominiums, and all the buildings and residents along the Everett Turnpike on the east side, north of Exit 12, because there's a lot of homes and folks there that, when you widen that up, the highway's going to be right in their backyard. So, we obviously have a concern, and therefore, we feel that this is going to negatively impact them, not only for their quality of life, but the value of their property. So, this letter is being submitted to Victoria. She and the Commissioner of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Now, Tom, am I asked to read this? Do you want me to read it, or?
I don't know that you have to read it. You can if you want to.
Well, I mean, I think we'll put it on the town website.
Oh, sure.
And I don't want to, you know, take up all the time here. The only other thing I'd say is, you know, I've had a chance to talk to more state reps, and I got to ask the folks out there, reach out to your state reps, because, I mean, Representative Rung has been great. She's come in here, and a number of reps have been advocating for us. But the bottom line here is that apparently they've run out of money for further sound barriers. Well, this project doesn't kick off till '21, '22, and so, there's time to get legislation to put money in there. And I think that we need to get all our reps, we need to get our senator, we need to reach out to folks, and Merrimack is a big voting block when we want to be. And I think we need to let them know that. The Department of Transportation, as we're seeing with the turnpikes, it's been an interesting ride on that issue. So, you know, one of the things that bothered me was the footprint in some of these locations is too small for a berm. Okay. All you have to do is drive through Manchester, drive through various communities, and they found other forms of sound barriers. And I don't mean a picket fence, where they put a picket fence in some areas, which I thought was terrible. So, you know, we are advocating for these neighborhoods, we are advocating for you folks, so I emphasize getting out and speaking to your representatives. Do it now, so they can start getting the funding or working for the funding. So, anything else? I'll get off my stump.
Okay. Eileen, did you have something you wanted to add?
I agree with everything Peter has suggested, and I'm definitely on board. And what I'm going to say is, seems like a very trivial thing, but it comes with this seat over here, and that's that --
You're saying that used to be trivial?
Ministerial Drive and Vista do not even touch, so they should be separated streets, I think.
I agree.
And that's not a big deal otherwise, but thank you.
Okay.
Would you like to make that modification?
Would you like?
Yeah, if we could make that modification to separate those two roads. And also, you know, we've talked about our senator, who's been here, and our state reps, but the governor?
Well, they're all copied on our copy list for this letter.
But, I mean, the citizens, reach out to the governor, shoot him an email, shoot him a letter. A lot of votes here, and he's coming up for election again.
comfort and how much, for lack of a better word, relaxation, children who are affected in various stages on the spectrum derive from this type of device. I don't know what it is, but there's something about the enclosure, and yet being able to, we've been provided pictures with the portals that Bill was talking about, so they are not isolated visually. They can see what's going on, but there's a comfort zone that develops that they really do appreciate. I'm very impressed with the awareness and the effort of the Rotary Club and Matthew and the Parks and Rec Committee, to be that inclusive of children that are in that situation and have those needs. Very, very appreciative, and I want everyone to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lon. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the donation of 2,800, how much was the thing said?
2,935.
That. $2,935 from the Rotary Club. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 600 as well. Bringing us to our last order of business on the main agenda under new business, a review and study of the Town of Merrimack comment letter regarding sound barriers for the Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project, submitted by Town Manager Eileen Cabanel. Town Council to review the draft comment letter from the Town of Merrimack to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation regarding sound barriers for the Effie Everett Turnpike Widening Project. Eileen?
As you recall, during one of the council, recent council meetings, you had expressed a desire to write a letter because you were concerned that all the, that only some of the areas and neighborhoods were being provided with sound barriers. And you, and Nancy and Peter volunteered to write it. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Peter to talk about his letter.
Thank you, Eileen. Basically, this, you know, when this project began, I think a number of folks, when they first had that meeting, expressed their concerns that they're about the widening and the sound barriers. And it's obvious, all you have to do is take a ride down the turnpike. And the state has submitted a plan and a number, I believe seven areas are going to get sound barriers. Berms, and I believe they're anywhere from 16 feet high and anywhere from between 400 and 1,000 feet long at the various locations. But there's still a list of communities that I think the council here, we all sympathize with and want to advocate for, that do need sound barriers. And these are the East Ridge Condominiums, the Back River Road, Ministerial Drive, Vista Way, Roundtree Drive, Maple Ridge Condominiums, and all the buildings and residents along the Everett Turnpike on the east side, north of Exit 12. Because there's a lot of homes and folks there that when you widen that up, the highway's going to be right in their backyard. So we obviously have a concern, and therefore we feel that this is going to negatively impact them, not only for their quality of life, but the value of their property. So this letter is being submitted to Victoria. She and the Commissioner of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. Now, Tom, am I asked to read this? Do you want me to read it, or?
I don't know that you have to read it. You can if you want to.
Well, I mean, I think we'll put it on the town website.
Oh, sure.
And I don't want to, you know, take up all the time here. The only other thing I'd say is, you know, I've had a chance to talk to more state reps, and I got to ask the folks out there, reach out to your state reps. Because, I mean, Representative Rung has been great. She's come in here and a number of reps, and been advocating for us. But the bottom line here is that apparently they've run out of money for further sound barriers. Well, this project doesn't kick off till '21, '22. And so there's time to get legislation to put money in there. And I think that we need to get all our reps, we need to get our senator, we need to reach out to folks. And Merrimack is a big voting block when we want to be. And I think we need to let them know that. The Department of Transportation, as we're seeing with the turnpikes, it's been an interesting ride on that issue. So, you know, one of the things that bothered me was the footprint in some of these locations is too small for a berm. Okay. All you have to do is drive through Manchester, drive through various communities, and they found other forms of sound barriers. And I don't mean a picket fence, where they put a picket fence in some areas, which I thought was terrible. So, you know, we are advocating for these neighborhoods, we are advocating for you folks. So I emphasize getting out and speaking to your representatives. Do it now, so they can start getting the funding or working for the funding. So anything else? I'll get off my stump.
Okay. Finley, did you have something you wanted to add?
I agree with everything Peter has suggested, and I'm definitely on board. And what I'm going to say seems like a very trivial thing, but it comes with this seat over here. And that's the...
You're saying that used to be trivial?
Ministerial Drive and Vista do not even touch, so they should be separated streets, I think.
I agree.
And that's not a big deal otherwise, but.
Would you like to make that modification?
Would you like?
Yeah, if we could make that modification to separate those two roads. And also, you know, we've talked about our senator who's been here, and our state reps, but the governor?
Well, they're all copied on our copy list for this letter.
But I mean, the citizens, reach out to the governor, shoot him an email, shoot him a letter. A lot of votes here, and he's coming up for election again.
Does this go on the agenda?
Yep.
Thank you.
So aside from that, are you comfortable with the wording? You and Nancy worked on this?
I've had a chance to read it. Tim Johnson also sent it to me. I'm satisfied.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? I think it's great that we're doing it. I appreciate the efforts that you folks have put into putting it together, and thank you for doing that. It's signed by me individually. Do we want to, is that all right with folks, or do we want to sign it as a council, or do we care particularly one way or the other?
I have no preference.
All right, we'll just let it go. Okay. So do we want to adopt this with the modifications described tonight? All those in favor of doing so, signify by saying, do we have a motion to, Deb? No. Yes, Eileen?
Sorry. Would it be a good idea, do you think, that we should send this letter to each individual and say, "Dear Governor Sununu," for instance, and "Dear," instead of CCing them, actually sending them individual letters?
It would be much more impactful, I think, to do so.
I think so. Yeah.
Okay. So we would need a motion to, does that affect?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lon Woods, seconded by Barbara, to send this letter individually out to the people that are listed on our CC list, as modified tonight. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 600. That brings us to minutes. We have minutes from May 9.
Mr. Chairman, I'm of the Town Council meeting minutes of Thursday, May 9, 2019. The following modifications.
Moved by Bill. Go ahead.
On page one, line 47, can we spell out CDC, and then put CDC in parentheses?
This Center for Disease Control?
Correct.
Yep.
On page two, line 16, spell out RFA, and then put RFA in parentheses.
Line 16?
Line 16.
And RFA is request for something?
I have no idea what the A is.
Application, maybe?
Application could be. Yep, I agree. Okay. Page three.
Something like that.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Page three, line nine, it's not NTSDR, it should be ATSDR. And down at the very bottom, between 47 and 48, on page three, some spacing, please.
Can you do that, please?
Sure. Page three, lines 47 and 48, just some spacing.
Before the on the question?
On the question, it should be on line 49.
So it ought to be on the next page, actually.
Correct.
Wherever it ends up.
That is all I had, unless Council Haley's going to correct me?
No, that's what I had as well.
Wow. Anybody else? Lon?
Page 16, line 24, they adjourned their meeting. I think that was six of us instead of five.
Good catch. That's a great catch.
Okay. I'm sure nobody abstained from adjourning. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? Peter was not there.
I was not here.
Do you want to abstain, or do you?
Yeah, I'll abstain.
Okay. Peter's abstaining. That passes 501 with Peter abstaining.
As a rule of thumb, I could still vote on it, right?
I think you can vote on it. It's been a general practice to abstain if you're not there, but...
Yeah, that makes sense.
But, and not to move it if you weren't there, but you can second it if you weren't there.
If you watch it on TV...
We never had a second on that, by the way. Did you want to second that, Peter?
Well, since I've abstained, I will second it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Peter, who abstained on the vote. That brings us all the way to comments from the press. That was quick. Comments from the public, that was even quicker. Comments from the council. Bill?
Fear the bear. Thank you.
Peter? Go Bruins. Oh.
I'm on the Conservation Commission, and the folks there, the hardworking folks, just had a seedling giveaway. And they had 80, between 80 and 90 folks showed up within a three, four hour time period, and cleaned them out on the various types of seedlings that they can plant on their properties and everything else. So it was a very successful program. Those folks, you know, they did a great job with it. So I just wanted to mention that, and I thought that's great. A lot of folks came out for it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? I did attend to, Finley?
Thank you. Because I've badgered everybody for the past month or so about the MIA fundraiser the 50th anniversary. It was absolutely, an absolute blast. I think everybody had a great time, a great turnout, in what I thought might be a one-time thing, could possibly happen more often as an annual event. The brewery location, I was worried about it. We didn't know where else we could do it, and it was out of this world. We didn't have to pay for the band, but they had a great band play in the whole night, and it was quite successful. The monies aren't all turned in yet. We still have a few outstanding checks that are due in, and we'll get a total. And it's going to a great cause. Predominantly, the money's going to, as I've told you, children who otherwise afford to participate at times. So thank you. Thanks to the town, I had school members, police, fire. It was just wonderful. So thanks again.
It was a good opportunity, but that's the only time you get to do a 50th anniversary.
It is, but it might, no, very true. Although I've been stuck at 50 for a long time.
Oh, have you? Okay. Well, we can tell.
I guess you can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What was I going to say? Oh, Planning Board. We had an interesting time at the Planning Board, mostly because with one of the members having to recuse themselves, we had four people and came to a two-two vote on the issue. So we have an opening on the Planning Board, and we can always use alternates. We have two alternate openings. So please, if you have an interest and want to serve the community, please consider signing up for Planning Board. We'll help you get trained up. We ask you to be open-minded and realize that people can develop their land. We don't get to control whether they develop their land, just making sure that they do it by the rules and regulations. Peter?
Tom, you make a great point, because just recently, I've had a couple of folks from town reach out to me, and they asked the question, geez, what's the planning, and what's the zoning board doing, and why are they letting all this in? And so I think I appreciate that explanation. I think people need to listen to it and get it out there. You know, once these folks have zoned and they follow the rules, that there's not a lot you can do about it, so.
It's funny, because that's the age-old thing. I've been here for quite a while, and it started, when I got here, it's 6,000 people, and I was in the second population boom of Merrimack, the first one being in the 60s. And so it's gone from that to today. And it's, I think generally, it's been quite positive in the end. I mean, it's hard getting through the moments when the construction's happening and everything, but when it is complete, it's worked out well for our town, in my estimation.
I think the part of it is the fear. You see the traffic on Route 3, especially now up in the Bedford Road area, there's a lot of people trying to, you know, figure out how this is going to work out. So, and there's a lot of us that are obviously wanting to wait and see how it goes, too, so.
Yeah, and I understand there's a lot of fear like that around both projects, the one at Exit 11, and then that one north of Merrimack as well. And both of them were very carefully studied by traffic engineers. Both of them have expanded opportunities to rework the intersections or the roads near, to make it happen better, or not be any worse than it is today. And so I think we have to just kind of wait and see. And I know, I wasn't here when places like Anheuser-Busch went in, but I know there was a lot of fear when a big company like that would move in, and everybody was concerned the quality of life was going to go downhill. But I can't imagine not having them there. I think they're a great asset to our community. As you pointed out with the MIA thing, it's just a great place to be able to go and have a celebration. So I think we need to breathe a little bit, relax, and realize that some of these things have been vetted by professionals to see whether they'll impact. And while some of us know that it will cause great grief and troubles, I think we find often that it's not quite as bad as we believe. I certainly saw that when the premium outlets were going in. There was a lot of hue and cry about how terrible that was going to be traffic-wise and everything. I don't believe those problems have materialized at all. But I'm sure people are impacted, but in general, I think the town's better off. Anyhow, with that said, if there's nothing more, then we've come to the end of our agenda.
Move to adjourn?
Thank you.
Seconded.
Moved by Barbara and seconded by Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstaining? That passes 600. Thank you very much. Please turn off your mics.